Yes.
Giannata.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Lozola, yes. Fucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Smith. Palata.
Yes.
Del Gershia.
Here, yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll tell you that.
Okay, thank you. Any applications for adjournment?
Yes.
We do?
Yes, we do.
Who do we have? Okay. Come on in here. Dear Miss, uh, this is dated yesterday, February 27th. Uh, it was...
Yes, and it was 20...
Email.
Yes, and it was 20...
Oh, two days ago, 20... Yeah, today's the first, let's see. Mrs. Ciccarelli, please see attached letter requested an adjournment in connection with the Renaissance Building Incorporated. Uh, see care of Jere- Jerele Zara. Application for 6367 Brighton Avenue in Belville from March 1st to April 5th, 2018. Meetings of the Belville Zoning Board of Adjustment. Thank you, and should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to call. Okay. That's from Mr. Palme- uh, Michael Piramali from the, uh, from, uh, Gassione and, uh...
La Marco.
La Marco, yes. Okay. All right, anyone interested in this case? As soon as I get my envelope opened, I'll give you the ZB number. Okay. ZB 2018-02, it's number four on the agenda. The applicant is seeking a variance to have existing sheds remain in the backyard. That will be adjourned with no further notices either in the mail or in the newspaper to our Thursday, April 5th, 2018 meeting. Okay. Now... All right, now, the first case on our agenda tonight, there's no other application for adjournment, correct?
Correct.
Okay. First case on our agenda tonight is ZB 2017-019. The applicant proposes adding existing facility and a basement office at 65-69 North Avenue. It's, uh, owned by 65 North Avenue LLC. And we have new plans, I believe. Yes.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, council, poll, Santinver Geo, behalf of the applicant. 65 North Avenue LLC.
All right, go ahead, proceed.
If you recall, to refresh your recollections, we were here at the last meetings, essentially concluded our testimony. The board had some questions about the plans because, in my opinion, the concern was that there was no indication of interior stairs from the lower level to the second level. This is a doctor's office on the first level.
Well, there was stairs. And your new plans now say existing stairway to remain.
To remain.
To remain.
Yes.
We'll never take them back.
The argument was that you were making your people go outside to go upstairs.
Yes.
And that raised some red flags for us.
Yes. We understand that.
And that's what happened.
Thank you for correcting me. And, um, the prior version of the plans only had the floor plan for the lower floor, not the upper floor.
Right.
So hopefully we've addressed, uh, your concerns and everything.
Well, that's a question. Because as I'm seeing this, well, existing first floor plan, I assume that's not changing at all.
No, this...
This is not... Bottom is basement. The upstairs, it just says existing room, existing room, existing room. Existing living room, existing dining room. Is this going to be a separate lot?
When you're saying somewhere clear, we established last meeting, we're calling first level, not a basement.
Yes, thank you.
Right? Because it's not a basement. It's a first level. You're more in...
Ground level.
Ground level.
This is a raised rent, just like my house. My garage goes into the lower level.
Look, again, we're not calling it a basement because it's a first level. Because that's one of the discussions we had last meeting, that this is the first level, right?
Yeah.
And they had a whole out of the first level to go up to the second level to be quiet.
Which means there's no basement there.
No, I can't tell you there's a basement.
Well, there is nothing below this, I was there.
No, there isn't.
It's first level.
Excuse me, just for the record, you're Mr. Plasko, right?
Yes, yes.
Was he sworn in last week?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko, you're the manager?
Yes.
Consider yourself still under oath if you want to respond.
Okay.
No questions are important. Because according to what you're showing here, the whole, the whole, uh, doctor's office is going to be on that lower level and nothing upstairs.
That's true, although he indicated before that the doctor may go upstairs and sit at his desk or keep, if he chooses to.
Well, I'll give you an example. I went there, okay? The existing living room that's listed on here with the fireplace, okay, on the top, that was the doctor's office. Because his desk is right there, still there.
Okay.
So that was the actual doctor's office itself. Now you have it that the administration is downstairs. Now, is the doctor gonna have an office downstairs or upstairs? Or how's this gonna work?
I think we testified to that, that the patients are gonna be met on the lower level, the ground floor entrance on Frederick Street.
So what you're saying is this is going to be a commercial property owner?
Absolutely.
Right, that was...
We're under oath and there was some concern about that and we're trying to...
And that could be, that could be part of the, uh, resolution.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I think you also testified that, that, that your staff might need going up into filing and whatever else, right? It's not meant to be a mental unit, correct?
It's not gonna be a residential unit.
Correct.
And the kitchen's upstairs, too.
Right, but it wasn't meant...
Full kitchen.
It's not meant to be a mental unit.
Right.
To be for the doctor's, uh, the doctor himself and his staff usage. That's it.
Period.
Period. And possibly filing, uh, files upstairs, additional files. Yes. Could be old files instead of permanent files, okay. All right, as long as that's okay. Anything else?
No, okay, that's it.
Anything, anything by other members of the board? Is everybody good on this? Now, there was a second set of plans, which Gina has, I asked her to bring them here, there's only two copies now. Yes, what are those?
Those are supposed to be downstairs, on the short floor.
Yeah, that's...
You don't have that.
No, we had it last meeting, and we, and that's why, that's why we made them do this side, right?
Is this the one from the last meeting?
Yes.
I don't think that's from the last meeting.
No.
No, no, it's not, because he didn't have color.
I think I looked at this and this had a date that it was just handed in.
Yes.
Yes.
Isn't that what I have?
Everywhere, no?
That's not what you have, will you?
Yes, it is.
It is, it's what I have.
Well, then why was this stamped differently? This has just been stamped, it's just been handed in. And there was only two copies, you sent it to a two-way...
The architect made two sets of drawings, one for this meeting and one for the construction official. Just for the permits.
That's it.
Okay.
I think that's what it is.
And it's the same?
Same, oh, it's the same. It said it has, I think, electrical and plumbing.
Same thing.
It is the same? Okay. All right, gotta do it right. Well, that's, that's covered up, that's the sign that's covered up. Now, you're gonna use the existing sign?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Same dimensions?
Yes.
Uh, can we swear to Mr. Di Lorenzo, or was he swa-? Well, he was already sworn on this case, I suppose. I'm not sure, I'm not sure who it was. All right, so swear a minute, because I wanna make sure there's no problem with this on line. Frank, if you can raise your right hand, Frank. Mr. Di Lorenzo's zoning officer with regard to this application, do you serve a testimony, so it's true?
Yes.
Thank you. Frank, is there any problem with the sign the way it is?
There was a variance in that, uh...
Oh, there already was?
Yes.
Okay, so that'll carry on, Frank.
Yep.
Okay, no problem. Just wanna make sure, I don't want no problems later on.
Is that the sign on the lawn or the one on the...
The sign on the lawn. The one in the picture.
Yeah, uh, the picture above it, what's that there? That green thing, that I saw.
Oh, that's the entrance. I believe that sign is legal, it's a small sign, very small. Am I correct, Frank?
Yeah. Same plate sign?
Green one.
Yeah.
I was worried about the size of the big sign, that's all. So, uh, is there any members of the public who wish to ask questions on this application? Is there any member of the public who wishes to give testimony on this application? Seeing none, I leave everything to the board. Your pleasure.
My only question is, is there any, uh, caveats from our last meeting that we wrote down on that slide?
We had the hours of operation, I think the board wanted it, it ended Monday through Tuesday, and then Thursday and Friday night, 8:00 to 3:00 p.m. Uh, we had no residential use on the second floor. No residential tenant. Stairway to be inside, and then tonight we talked about again, no rental on the second floor, only the doctor and the staff, and the sign will be the same. That's, and then our normal conditions.
Now, I wanna ask Frankie something. Frank, is there any problem with this, because I believe this is a residential zone? In other words, can somebody come in later and just put an apartment upstairs?
No, we'd have to come back, because it'd be a mixed use again.
Okay. Now, all right, let's say he sells the place and has no water or doctor's office, can it then be done?
It goes with the land.
Goes back.
Comes back.
They would have to come back?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, no problem then.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, what's the condition?
Existing condition.
Seconded by Mr. Caruso. Uh, clerk called a roll.
Caruso.
Yes.
Giannata.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Lozola.
Yes.
Fucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Palata.
Yes.
Yes.
Del Gershia.
Yes. So it's approved, seven to none.
Thank you very much for your time.
Called eight, but it's only seven, Miss Lo...
You really need it.
She's a second, and Miss, uh, Plaza cannot vote.
Lozola.
Lozola. Look at the name, right, one of these days. One of these days. Casa Longa.
Thank you, take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, the second case on our agenda. Yeah, I think that might have been before you...
No, 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 why didn't you do it?
Well, it's an old case, before I went on vacation, this is, uh... Yes. I don't remember what the floor is.
Thank you.
Uh, ZB 2017-18, 3337 Rutgers Street, Parts Authority. The applicant is proposing to add retail of auto parts to an existing warehouse. Mr. Piramali, did you provide, uh, us with your notice you normally do?
Absolutely. This was adjourned originally from the December 2nd meeting, 2017, it was provided for that meeting. And then we had, uh, the adjournment until January 4th. Unfortunately, January 4th, we had a snow day. All right, for snow day, and then, uh, we were on from February 1, we didn't have seven members, and now here we are today, March 27th, 2017. Hoping to go forward with this application, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Okay, proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name to the record is Michael Piramali of the law firm Gassione La Marco, 524 Union Avenue in Belville. Here tonight, I'm the behalf of applicant James Oll, LLC, operating as Parts Authority. Uh, the applicant is before the board tonight in connection with proposed future use of the subject property at 33-37 Rutgers Street, otherwise known as Block 9402. Lots 2, 3, 4, and 5 on the tax map to the township of Belville. The applicant is before the board this evening, seeking preliminary final major site plan approval in addition to use variances and bulk variance relief in order to convert 1,970 square feet of an existing 19,951 square foot warehouse, currently used for auto parts warehousing to a retail use, also selling auto parts, as well as making significant improvements to the site to include a paved and striped parking area and landscaping improvements.
Mr. Piramali, if you could hold up for a minute, I see an attorney-looking person standing here, would you, uh...
Just waiting to make my appearance.
Why don't you put your hand in the air?
John Dusinberry, representing Modern Auto Parts at 82 Rutgers Street. I'm sorry, your, your last name is Dusinberry? I'm an attorney in fair court.
And you represent?
Modern Auto Parts and the Pascal family owners of property.
All right, now, I need the specific names of the people that you're representing for obvious reasons.
Okay, the company is Modern Auto Parts.
Right.
And the owner of the property, I believe, if I'm correctly saying, is the, uh, Pascal, Pascal Family Trust. No, no one else, I have no other clients in this.
All right, so...
No, no one else.
Anyone involved with the Pascal Family Trust needs to speak through you today?
That's correct. That's correct.
All right.
Thank you. Continuing, the subject property is located in the I-V industrial zone, and the proposed use of the property is not permitted in that zone. As for the variance that being requested in connection with this application, specifically the variance is being, specifically the applicant is requesting a D1 use variance for permitting a retail use in the I-V industrial zone. Uh, that's in violation of Belville zoning ordinance section 23-7.13. Also, a second D1 use variance for permitting two principal uses on the same lot, namely the existing warehouse use and the proposed retail use, where only one principal use is permitted on each lot pursuant to Belville zoning ordinance section 23-7.1J. Uh, also C or bulk variance relief for a minimum front yard setback, where a front yard setback of 15 feet is required pursuant to your schedule of regulations, and a front yard setback of two feet is provided, that's a pre-existing condition. Also, a C or bulk variance for a minimum side yard setback, where a side yard setback of five feet is required, and a side yard setback of two feet is provided, again, a pre-existing condition on the site. Uh, also a C or bulk variance for maximum lot coverage, where a maximum lot coverage of 50% is permitted, and a lot coverage of 63% is proposed, again, this is pre-existing. And lastly, a C or bulk variance for a minimum number of parking spaces, where a minimum of 38 parking spaces are required pursuant to Belville zoning ordinance section 23-6.1, and only 18 parking spaces are proposed. As for this application tonight, I intend to call three witnesses. First, our regional general manager of Parts Authority, Slava Gorislavsev. He will, uh, testify on behalf of the tenant business owner of Parts Authority, will testify to the current and proposed operation of the business. Next, our architect, Robert Cazarelli, will testify regarding the proposed alterations to the site and site plan, uh, as well as the renovations to the interior of the building and the parking areas. And lastly, our planner, George Williams, will testify regarding the proposed use, the applicant's zoning criteria to the variances requested and why they should be rented. So without further delay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call my first witness.
Yes, your right.
I'll call Slava Gorislavsev to testify. Sir, could you raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you shall give shall be the truth?
Yes.
Just, um, state your name again.
Slava Gorislavsev.
S-L-A-V-A?
Yep.
Can you spell your last name?
G-O-R-I-S-L-A, V as a vector, T-S-G-B.
G-O-R-I-S?
L-A. V as a vector, T-S-E-B as a vector.
Thank you. And Slava, what's your business address?
37 Rutgers Street, Belville, New Jersey.
And what is your position with Parts Authority?
I am, uh, regional general manager.
And how many locations are you the regional general manager for currently?
Nine.
And where are those locations generally located?
Along the I-95 corridor.
Can you describe some of the towns that you're in with that you're with?
Belville, Patterson, Newark. Hackensack, Wharton, Scadaway, Hillside, New Brunswick.
And Parts Authority leases tenants' space at, uh, 33 Rutgers, correct?
Correct.
And how long has Parts Authority operated at that location?
About, uh, a year and two months.
Are you aware of what that part of the property was previously used for?
Uh, I believe it was, uh, home goods warehousing.
And why did Parts Authority choose to open that location in Belville specifically?
We outgrew our previous location.
And that location was also located in Belville?
Yes.
And where was it located?
Approximately two blocks away from Portland Street.
And when you moved to the current location, were you under the impression that you'd be able to sell goods on a retail basis?
No.
But you did sell retail goods for a time being there, correct? And then there was a violation, and that's, you know, that's when you put up a sign. So when you stopped selling retail, what did you do to notify customers of the fact that retail sales weren't permitted?
Uh, we put up signs as per request, um, on the windows and also inside the warehouse.
And how long had those signs been on for?
I would say roughly seven months.
Would you describe Parts Authority's business model generally?
We sell to wholesale customers, in other words, repair shops. We do it internet shipping, not out of this location, but out of this gathering location. And that's probably...
And of those other nine locations that you are general manager for, are retail sales permitted at those locations?
Yes.
And what percentage of your business at those other locations do those retail sales comprise, in estimate?
Uh, probably less than 1%.
So why do you believe that retail sales are such a small component of Parts Authority's business model?
Because since the beginning, we sold to repair shops, that's the core of our business.
Do you advertise retail sales?
No.
Do you intend to begin to advertise retail sales?
No.
Uh, and what percentage of retail sales do you expect, if this application is approved, that retail use is permitted at the Belville location? What percentage of retail sales do you expect at that location, of your total sales at that location?
Most likely less than 5%.
So again, a very small percent. Now, why the increase over the, the general 1%?
Well, we are the main drag, uh, you know, Rutgers Street, a lot of traffic goes through there, so I would assume customers would stop by at that point.
And your other locations are not located in proximity to business districts generally?
No.
And why, why is that? Why do you generally choose sites that aren't located in business districts for some type of business reason?
Uh, yeah, we, we usually, again, cater to, uh, installers, which is repair shops, and, uh, they don't really like that we sell to retail customers.
Now, if, if we do permit, if this board does choose to permit retail sales at the Belville location, uh, if it's only gonna be 5% of the total sales, why are we seeking retail sales at that location? And why does it afford to be Parts Authority?
Well, we don't wanna ruin our image, we don't want to turn away customers, it looks bad. Somebody comes in and asks us to buy a part, we usually don't say no.
So what are your current and proposed hours of operation at the current Belville location?
Monday to Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and on Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
And are you both on Sundays?
We are.
And do you intend to change those hours in any way, should this pitch be granted?
No.
How many employees work at the Belville location available?
Roughly 14.
And of those 14 total, how are they allocated among staff?
Uh, about six of them are inside, between a manager, dispatcher, some warehousing guys, and the rest are drivers.
And of those drivers, are they basically out driving their vehicles, delivering goods, is that?
Yes.
So they're not part of the parking lot?
No.
If this application is approved as submitted, uh, there will be improvements to the parking area to include paving, striping, signage, et cetera. How many parking spaces will be available after the improvements are completed?
18.
18 total parking spaces. During your time as general manager of the Belville location, have you ever observed a parking problem at the property?
No.
And if this application is approved and retail sales are permitted, do you anticipate any problems with parking?
No.
Is there any on-street, or rather, on-street parking available outside of the first parking lot?
Yes, on Steven Street.
Changing, uh, subject, how is garbage and recycling currently handled at the Parts Authority location?
We have a private company picking up both, uh, garbage and recycling.
And it's separated?
Yes.
And there's a particular area that that's set aside for?
Yes.
And where is that refuse area?
In the back of the building.
And is it enclosed in any way?
There is a chain link fence that, uh, closes it.
Have you had an opportunity to review the letter issued by Belville Zoning Officer Frank Di Lorenzo dated July 27, 2017?
Perhaps.
There are some comments within that letter that I'd like to go over with you, just to, uh, ensure that we're going to comply with those particular requests that are made in that letter. Uh, specifically with regard to comment four, requesting the township sidewalks, parking lot, uh, and sidewalk aprons be improved in accordance with township standards. If this application is approved, will you agree to do that?
Yes.
Comment number five, request that the refuse area will be effectively screened. Uh, currently, there's no screening, but it's in a chain link fence area. Uh, if this application is approved, would you agree to screen the refuse area that was requested?
Yes.
Comment six, request that the new parking area have properly marked entrances and exits, uh, and indicate the direction of traffic flow. Will the parking area be approved according to that request?
Yes.
And lastly, comment seven, ask that the areas around the driveways and parking areas be seeded, uh, shielded by bushes or other appropriate plantings. Do you agree with, uh, landscape in accordance with that request?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions of this race.
Okay. Questions by, well, first, maybe before we do that, maybe we should do cross-examination by the attorney, by the objective. Yeah, let's do that first.
Forgive me if I don't try to pronounce your last name.
That's okay.
Okay? I, I listened carefully to your testimony, and I believe you said that you moved in 14 months ago?
Uh, yes.
And about eight months ago, you stopped selling retail?
We were asked to put signs up a lot of eight months ago.
Okay, so roughly six months. If my math is right, you went in, took possession, and started selling retail.
Uh, we continued doing business as usual from the, our previous location.
Okay, so in your previous location of Portland Street, you actually sold retail to?
Yes.
Did you know that retail's not permitted at that location?
No.
You did not know that? But you did any?
We, our company, Parts Authority, bought another company called Woodbury Automotive, and we continued business, business as that.
All right, so you didn't know that retail was not permitted at that location. Okay. You said when you moved into this location, you had no expectation to sell retail. That's what you said a few minutes ago, correct?
Correct.
All right. So what changed your mind?
Changed my mind to...
Because you then started, you, you did interior improvements, did you not, to be able to sell retail?
We did interior improvements to accommodate people who work inside, we didn't want them working in a, uh, warehousing environment. We have cameramen that are sitting there and answering phones.
Okay, but you had to, you had to separate, I assume, the retail, I haven't been inside, but yeah, so help me out. I assume you had to separate the retail sales area from the warehouse area?
It was already designed that way.
Okay, so there were already some demise in walls between the two?
Yes.
Okay, did you have to do any renovations in the retail area?
We, no, we removed, uh, walls. That's all we did.
Did you put any windows into the building?
We did.
For the retail area?
We did, yes.
Okay. And you've since installed a very large surface sign on the outside of the building, have you not?
Correct.
When did that happen?
Uh, as soon as the permits were opened, which was, I would say, two months after we moved in.
Okay, so that sign went up then before you learned that retail was not permitted?
Uh, I, I did not know that retail was permitted, and we applied for signs anyway.
Okay. So no one said anything to you in the town about retail not being permitted?
No, we had the construction official tell us and ask me, will there be any retail sales?
So at that time, you said no?
I said, if somebody walks in off the street and asks us to buy a part, we would say, you know, we wouldn't say no.
Okay, but now you're looking to, to change that a little bit and actually encourage people to come off the street and buy from the retailer, not? Is that what you'd like to do, is that why you're here tonight?
No, we, we would just like to keep our image.
All right. So, but you do want, you're here asking the board to allow you to sell retail?
Yes.
When you had no expectation that you would be able to when you moved in?
Correct.
All right. Parts Authority is a tenant or an owner, probably?
A tenant.
You're a tenant. And were you represented by counsel, if you know, when you negotiated the lease?
Uh, I don't know.
Do you know whether or not any of our...
Do you know whether or not any inquiry was made by the council as to whether or not retail was permitted?
I don't know.
You don't know that either, all right. Now, you've indicated that only a very small part of your business is going to be retail. At least that's your expectation, correct?
Correct.
Do you understand though, that if you're allowed to do retail, there's no limitation that this board can impose on you as to how much retail sales you do?
I understand that.
Uh, now, you were doing retail sales for about, let's go back to that, I guess, I'd be six or eight months?
Okay.
How were the sales then?
I would say one to two percent at most.
One to two percent at most, okay.
Of our total business.
The ninety percent remainder of the other, the warehousing portion, I assume, but you tell me if I'm wrong, that's going to be for parts and all the things that you sell wholesale?
It's, it is right now.
Okay, so that's gonna, you say right now, what's it gonna change here?
Nothing.
Okay, so it's gonna stay that way?
Yes.
Okay, I just, just making sure you don't have another plan?
No.
Okay, all right, so that, that then is roughly seventeen thousand square feet of warehousing to be used for sale for your wholesale business?
Correct.
Okay, your drivers and your vehicles inside. Here, let me just one moment.
I, I have no more questions. Does any members of the board have questions? I have a, a question. Now, on Portland Street, when you were there, between what two streets were you?
Uh, pardon me if I'm mispronouncing, Geralman and whatever that next street is, I'm not sure. It's Geralman going towards Rutgers.
Oh, Geralman going towards, okay, I see. Is that Holmes?
High Street, is it High Street or High Street?
Holmes Street.
Holmes, I'm right, it is Holmes?
It sounds about right.
Okay, now, were you on the east side or west side?
I'm not sure which one is which, but if you come down.
If you're going up toward Washington Avenue, it's west. If you're going down toward the river, it's east.
That would be on the west side.
The west side. Can, can I ask Mr. DiLorenzo a question as he's got to be sworn in first on this case?
Yes.
Um, Frank, consider yourself still sworn in for this application as well.
Frank?
Yes.
Is retail allowed on that side of Portland?
No, it's industrial.
That's industrial also on the west side? Okay, just ask me a question. That's all from me now. Any other members? Want to come along? Of course, of course.
Regarding the, uh, Mr. DiLorenzo's letter, right? And the seven things that he, or eight things that he cited, which generally said, and he resolved those. As a manager, he has that kind of authority?
Yes, as far as he does.
I just want to make sure you know fast what.
I understand.
You never know, right?
No.
You're, you're a manager, you're, you think an owner would make that? So he's authorized to make those kind of commitments?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Any other members, Mr.?
Just one question, back in the December when Mr. Gachion was here and he asked for adjournment, I asked him at that time if he could tell us if there are any other businesses similar to this proposal in the IB zone. In other words, any, any other businesses that are operating both as a warehouse and a retail? He said he would do that research and get back to us. Do you have that?
Mr. Sheldon, our planner is prepared to present that information during his second of the testimony.
Okay, very good.
In that example, we also have a report that we will distribute that.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other members of board have any questions? Any members of the public have questions of the witness based upon testimony given? None, then you may call your next witness.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just one follow-up question?
Sure, sure.
My, my personal recollection was refreshed. Describe your sign that's on the side of the building, what does it say?
Uh, which sign? There, there are two different signs.
Well, the big one that's right on Rutgers Street.
It's illuminated, and it says Parts Authority, Auto Parts Superstores.
So it's Parts Authority and then Auto Parts Superstores?
Correct.
Like architect Robert Cozzarelli. Geraldo, what you write down? With regard to this application, you swear the testimony or how to give show the truth?
Yes.
State your name, please, and spell your last name.
It's Robert Cozzarelli, that's C-O-Z-Z-A-R-T-E-L-L.
You're presenting Mr. Cozzarelli as architect? Mr. Cozzarelli's appeared before the board many times.
Yeah, it's number five, he only forgot his license to testify.
So we will accept Mr. Cozzarelli as an architect? As a field for architecture, thank you very much.
He will not be, uh, testifying as a plaintiff?
He will not.
Okay, they know he's got both licenses.
Mr. Cozzarelli, you're engaged to prepare the architectural and site plans for the proposed project?
Yes, I am.
Would you describe the site as it exists today?
Site, um, primarily is composed of, well, let me explain, Starling. Everything you see on the site, the way it is presented now, it's all existing. We have not enlarged this building or increased this building or any capacity. Uh, the building itself is forty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five square feet. It's a one-story masonry building. The remainder of the lot in the, on the corner of Stevens and Rutgers, there's a partially paved parking area. Uh, it's not improved. And to the rear of the lot, there's a paved area, and that's what was alluded to before as the area where, uh, the refuge area would be, you know, stored in the back of this property.
What's about the existing structure on the site?
Uh, again, the structure is a masonry building, it's a one-story, um, pretty much a little brick, you know, um, it's really old building, it's kind of turned in the last century, nineteen's, uh, nineteen thirty, nineteen twenty type of structure, some, some wood columns, uh, you know, in, in the interior, actually, actually kind of beautiful when you walk in and see it. So it's an old-time warehouse, I would be exact.
Would you describe the alterations that are proposed to incorporate the retail use?
Uh, the, uh, retail, there's, I'm trying to stand this, I'm trying to put it back to you. Uh, there was, at the front of the building, along Rutgers Street, it's predominantly where there was some existing walk-in space and a front door with a vestibule, uh, you know, that, and there was a, remnants of where a window used to be. We reopened that window, that opening, kept the same lintel, and removed the vestibule because it was antiquated. And most of the stuff in this area needed a facelift. Um, the, you know, there is, you know, basically just a large open reception area. The rest was, you know, some bathrooms, and the remainder of the building was for all storage, for the auto parts. Uh, what we did.
Mr. Cozzarelli, I'm assuming that what you're showing us are exact replicas of what we have?
Yes. Uh, this was, I'm sorry, this is drawing eight-two. Um, eight-two actually shows a layout of all the storage area, all the racking. Um, that is, is extremely important to, when, when the towns are submitted to the town to understand the aisle widths and, and, you know, it's more about the safety of the occupants in, in, in the building area. This eight-two basically explains the renovations to the retail, you know, to the front area of the building and, uh, the receiving area. So all, there was a bunch of offices that were demolished there for the pre-existing, the existing owner. That was opened up for receiving. The bathrooms were added and modified, there was an existing break room. And there was a, basically that front area, you know, it was a large counter that ran across the front. So, uh, the way I think it works, you know, is that, you know, people are met at the front counter, parts are retrieved from the back, the doors in front counter, and they're put there if that's the case. Otherwise, it's car, you know, trucks are doing the delivery. I, honestly?
Is anything, anything other than A-five?
Yes.
I want A-five, that's it.
Okay, so what happened was with the initial submission, uh, that full set was, was given, uh, then they only provided A-five because it was just supposed to be incorporated into the plans that were already there. So what you have, I would assume, is amended A-five, which should have been incorporated and superseded the A-five with the first set of plans that you don't have. So what we need to do is have you provide the full set.
A, uh, that one's for me?
Date of October thirteenth, two thousand sixteen.
What do they have?
These were the drawings that were submitted to the building department.
All right, so we've not seen those.
I, I don't have, I don't have.
Why don't you mark the first one, A-one, and the second one, A-two?
Let's do that.
Describe them as, uh, floor plans?
Yes, A-one is a floor plan, shows a demolition, it's a demolition plan. Uh, demolition of the interior partitions.
Okay.
Okay?
That's A-one, right?
A-one.
A-one.
A-two is the proposed plan of the improvements to the interior.
Okay.
The other thing, may, may I continue?
Let's, let's mark the. We'll argue it in one shot. We'll arrive.
Well, A-three is an existing sprinkling plan. And A-four, we've done, these are, A-four is a power and lighting plan.
And there are no additional sheets besides A-five, which everyone on the board already asked for?
And A-five is? A-five is the, um, parking.
Right, so I guess A-two is the most important?
A-two is, how it was built out, the improvements that we think are.
And I, and I guess that's about it, the one that most of them.
Yeah.
That's how it exists?
Right, that's kind of it.
So.
So, on A-two, there's a statement regarding warehouse space.
Yes.
Seventeen K, is that right? Okay, so retail space, what's that then? What else?
I believe the question paraphrased is, where is the nineteen-hundred square feet approximately of retail space located within that?
Wait, is that, oh, I didn't even know what the number was.
It's nineteen-hundred, it's all front and middle.
Nineteen-hundred square feet?
Nineteen-hundred square feet, that's the receiving area.
Right, so it's retail space. It's like, it's shelving, I don't know, you're up and down an aisle, what are you doing?
What we were asked to do is lay out a front counter. If that's, that was the scope of the, of what we're.
That's it, it's not, it's not up and down the aisle, no, it's a counter.
It's a counter.
At your retail space, that's it, that's the nineteen-hundred square feet.
That's correct.
That's right. Seventeen K, right? Is the warehouse space, right?
That's correct.
And the overall total score of, what is, it's still forty-two K, right?
No.
That's what I'm.
That was a lot size.
Twenty-eight.
That's a lot size?
Twenty-eight.
Building was nineteen-nine fifty-one.
The building is nineteen-nine fifty-one, that's the whole building, and we're converting nineteen-hundred, one thousand nine hundred and seventy square feet.
So roughly ten percent?
Roughly ten percent, exactly.
Try, try again.
Okay, so I, let me into it, let's try.
That's fine. And, uh, yeah, the only other thing that was done to the side of this building facing the parking lot, there was an entrance door. They had it with some, you know, windows there. That was, the only other thing that we, we showed that was in the explanation.
Go on to describe the proposed parking improvements.
Now, what was said, if I'm, if I'm correct, if someone comes in for something, then what they do is they leave the counter, go into the warehouse, define, find whatever it is, and pick it up?
They don't, they don't go in, the person coming off the street or?
No, I'm not talking about the person, I'm talking about the person at the counter.
At the counter, they have people that go retrieve whatever they have to.
In the warehouse?
Yes.
Our work Mr. Cozzarelli is going to have at this point is, A, updated sheet, A-five. Uh, the reason why it was updated from what you have in front of you is to show a five-foot parking setback from all lot lots. All parking spaces are located, uh, now five feet away from the lot lines eliminates the need for any additional variance relief.
A-five is going to be updated A-five?
Correct.
Mr. Cozzarelli, describe the proposed parking improvements.
Basically, we took the existing parking area that's there, like I said, half of the lot had some mechanics on it. The other half of the lot that was unimproved, maybe there was some, some stain, there was weeds, it was just some of it was overgrown there. So the, the idea now is to pave that whole area and to create a parking, um, arrangements that, you know, vehicles can find their way to the parking spot the way it should be done, so it's not haphazard as it is now. Nothing's really paved in the lot at this point. So the most, we, we kicked this around many different ways. The most, uh, the amount of parking that we can get here is eighteen spots, including a barrier-free handicap spot. Closest, you know, to an entrance door. We also proposed, you know, as the, you know, comments to the show, an ingress and egress sign. Uh, directional arrows are also there. As far as landscaping, what I recommend is eventually some seated area, uh, ground cover type of material with, uh, pachysandra or a very low-lying evergreen. And the reason is because of proximity and location of, of the lot to, to the streets. It's always good to keep it, keep that low. Don't recommend any kind of fencing, you know, because you don't want to block the view of any vehicles coming in. In the parking lot, they're on the street, so there's a safety reason for doing that. And I think we can achieve a, you know, a good-looking lot from doing that. Any kind of lighting will be, uh, just mounted on the building. And any kind of, uh, improvements as far as, you know, for the, uh, stormwater retention will be done on, on site. Uh, we absolutely look, we, we start to make sure all those details are, are part of the firm's construction documents.
Describe the ingress and egress and the particular circulation proposed for the site and the drivers.
The, the driveway, the curb cut is pre-existing, so we're not, we're not even recommending or moving the, the location. But when we did study it, it's actually a pretty decent location for the, for the, uh, the driveway entrance. Again, if we put it closer to the intersection, it's not a smart thing to do. And if we put it in the middle and split the parking, you know, on each side of the building, something really don't want to do. You want to try and, you know, keep, keep a, a lane open for emergency traffic comes into the, into the parking lot area too. It's a very small condensed lot, so I think we're asking a lot of it, but it's working. And, um, like I said, it's all, it's all covered in new mechanics.
Of course, any striping that would be required or arrows, directional arrows, signage? Would be able to accommodate?
Yeah.
Any requests that the town may have with regards to that?
Yes, and the, you know, the arrows are here, and also each, each lot is asked for what the, I mean, each spot is asked for what the code requests, nine foot wide by nineteen, maybe a sixty-degree angle, but it's there. It works, we had, we did. It works, we had, we did, you know, we did improve the setback to the five foot required on the Stevens Street side. And we had five foot, nine and an eighth, if you want to be super exact, on the one spot on the corner. And that's, that's pretty much it.
And for the questions, Mr. Chairman, I want to ask a question on this map before we, because you might find this interesting.
I'm sure I will.
There's only one driveway, correct?
That's correct.
Now, on the right of your plan, it says existing storage not in contract. What is that supposed to make?
Not in the scope of his authority to review. So it's out of his, so he doesn't make any representations with regard to the floor plan inside that area exactly?
Yeah, that's right, that's not in our, it's just we noted that that's there. It's the second tenant.
What second tenant? That's not part of the sports authority.
Right.
Maybe we should get the man back up from the sports authority, because this is a very big issue, I'm going to tell you right now.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to recall?
Yes, because I would like this cleared up before we go any further.
So you ready to sworn?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, please.
The key is, on this map, there's this area right behind the parking. Okay? And it says here, other storage not in scope. Now, are you leasing that also?
No.
Well, it's very interesting, because I don't see any other exit except into your storage.
There's an exit to Stevens Street.
There's an exit to Stevens Street. Is anybody using that right now?
Yes.
So where it ain't parked?
I'm not sure.
On the other side.
On the other side?
Mr. Chairman, we also have the owners of the building who actually operate there. This is out of that neighboring space, so we have that here with us as well.
Or maybe we should let them come up and testify before we go any further.
James Ollolc is the property owner of the entire property. Our tenant in this section that we are discussing currently is Parks Authority, and the owner themselves, James Oll operates out of the remainder of the space there, but we do have the property owner.
Let's call them off, because now not only do we have two uses, but now we have a second tenant, which I don't believe we were aware of.
Uh, yes, you were. Hi.
What, what, what?
Should we finish Mr. Casarelli?
No, let's hold off on Casarelli. Because let's get this straightened out first, then we can talk with Mr. Casarelli about more things here. Because he has no idea what's going on with this other piece of property, other part of the building.
I was very, that might, might come out.
Yeah, well, that's all you paid for it. Why don't you call, why don't you call a witness?
Odalis Pila, A-G-U-I-L-A.
Please tell your name.
Odalis is O-D-A-L-Y-S.
O-D-A-L-Y-S and your last name?
And you are a principal of the property owner, Anthony James Ollolc.
We own James Oll, and we have a business called...
Could you raise your right hand, please?
Question.
With regard to this matter, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, Shoby, the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
We own James Oll, that's an LLC, that's the whole building, right? When we decided to lease to them, we decided to take the other side, which is on Stevens Street, fifty-five Stevens Street, okay? And it's called Pila Distributors Inc., which you guys have all the papers, because inspectors came in to make sure that we were able to go in there and everything.
No, you misunderstand. We don't have the papers. Maybe this, this is the deal, Renzo has the papers. We don't have anything.
Correct.
So you own the whole property?
Correct.
And you're leasing to Parks?
Correct.
Now, did you buy this property from the previous owner that had a business there?
Yes, from back in that.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Okay. And they operated the whole building?
They operated the whole building, and we had, we had the whole building also, but in fifty-five Stevens Street, we had it like, you know, we put merchandise and stuff, but that was about it.
So what do you, what are you actually doing there?
Okay, we are doing the same thing as at the beginning when we bought the building. We distribute to supermarkets and small grocery stores. And our truck is on the other side. It's actually on Stevens Street, because we have a large space for the truck, like for two trucks and the two cars that we park there.
Okay, now behind, I assume that's here, correct? This area here? You have a cop?
A5.
A5. Yeah, right there, that there, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
And Parks Authority is then leasing past there also?
Parks Authority is leasing the other side, the big building.
No, 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 past that, on Stevens. See on the right? On the right part? Because that's what it says here on this form.
I, I can't read what it says.
Look at one of these papers.
Okay, where is, where are they?
Go to the right, go to the right, past that, come on, come on, there. That says Parks Authority on it on my cop.
Okay.
Oh, A5 says Parks Authority.
Am I correct? Are you leasing that part too, to them?
I don't know exactly.
I don't think this is part of the property.
That's not, that's not ours, but it's a building. It's not a building.
But it says Parks Authority. That's an open space, I assume?
This is, this is the property.
There's, okay, we have four lots, okay? The two lots that has the parking spaces, their building and our building. There's four lots altogether.
Why is it one lot here? Nothing broken up here.
This is your lot.
We have...
Well, no, that's the four lots combined.
Right, correct.
Oh, it's an open space.
There's two lots with parking.
Two dotted lines represent L shape, and within that, there's four lots? Correct.
Yes, correct. There's two lots that, that's where they have the parking lots, okay? Then there's Parks Authority, which is the big building, and then on Stevens Street, that's the other lot.
Where it says paved area?
The paved area is the parking.
That's on Courtland Street, that's down here. Courtland, see Courtland? This is Stevens up here. So, so that, that area past yours, going south, that is part of your property also, isn't it?
Correct.
Right, because you're, you're really a rectangular property. Am I correct?
Yes, we have, like even half of the whole block.
I assume that's open space there?
That's open space with a gate.
And that's being leased to Parks Authority also?
Oh, you mean the one on Courtland Street?
The one on Stevens Street.
No, Stevens Street is mine. Stevens Street is completely mine, except for the lots.
If you want to mark this?
Except for two lots or one lot?
There's two lots that they have.
Why do we mark it if we have to?
Two lots, that's what I'm getting at. There's one to the north and one all the way to the south. And you're in the middle, am I correct?
No, I'm not in the middle, I'm on the other side. At the end.
These are two copies, sorry. You might want to mark.
This is two lots, they have a lot. Probably the part of this wall between is probably a lot larger. I'm going to mark this survey A6 start.
This is fifty-five Stevens. This is fifty-five Stevens. Wait a minute.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I don't believe this is...
Sorry. Do you, do you want to have a recess while we get this all straightened out?
Also the property owner, I think we need to have this conversation together, unfortunately. Mr. Chairman?
As a recess?
Uh, no, with the board.
With the board, okay. Have your fun. One could talk at a time, otherwise you cannot address pride.
I'll say, yeah.
And you are also...
I'll add it, yes, say it again, slower and spell it. Not, not, one person at a time, please.
Now, before you give any testimony...
Wait a minute, A, I have to get this spelled correctly. A-G-U-I-L-A, the same as her, okay.
Yeah, get it for the attorney too.
Wait, 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 I'm going to mark A6, the survey, it's dated December of two thousand and ten. I have, I have a survey, okay. Now, we're, we're getting off, Ms. Aguilar?
Miss Aguilar.
And you're mister?
Yes.
Okay, I got your last name, your first name?
Jose.
Jose, okay. And you're going to bring clarity to all this, right?
Yeah, well, you see on the picture right here.
Okay, could you raise your right hand with regard to this matter? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give, Shoby, the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm assuming you're, you and your wife are the owners of the entire property?
James Ollolc.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, this is the way it is. This, this building is one whole building right here. And this is the, 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 where they receive merchandise and they have the garbage, it's back here, everything's here. And this is another building that the entrance to Stevens Street, fifty-five Stevens Street. Between this building, this building used to be connected by like a little hole, A5, A5, A5 hole, used to be a ramp connected together to go into this. And this is the parking space that is paving, and there's the other lot that is not paving, that's like a little rock, see all that? The whole, the whole, you got four, four lots. One here, two, three, and four lot. But on the one...
Under one, one D.
One D.
Okay, now, just as a point of clarification, this space here...
That's where we keep our trucks, and we got two trucks, two vans, and those four trucks, and we parked the cars here.
Now, is there any connection currently between this building that's utilized? No, no connection?
They're still there, they're still there.
So you have your own exit out onto Stevens Street?
And we have our own meters, gas meters, they have their own gas.
And the ramp is, the ramp has been closed off?
Yes, yes.
Now, now, to the right, who owns that property?
Here? Oh, this, this, what's?
Uh, what about Millers?
Millers?
So you don't own?
No, no, no.
This is Millers, this is our neighbor. Well, I need one person to testify at a time.
Miller, Miller. Miller and Son, is the other one, the other property.
So this is not Parks Authority?
No, no, no.
So we have to correct that on this, that's the survey.
Yeah, there's, there's only two properties in that, in that whole block.
Yes, I know that.
And that's...
Okay, now, now that we got that straightened out.
The uses.
Huh?
The uses.
The uses, yes, now we have two uses. Now, your, your new supply you sent to supermarkets?
Three uses.
We're wholesalers.
We're wholesalers.
Yeah.
So you do not...
We don't receive customers.
You don't receive any customers at all?
No.
Okay. Now, let me give Mr. Valano, I'm not Mr. Valano, I'm thinking of you all the time. Mr. DiLorenzo, what's it is? Mr. DiLorenzo, what is this now? Two?
He's not here.
He's not here.
He's not here. He's going upstairs.
Oh, God. Okay, why don't you finish your testimony, so we can get something done?
And these buildings, these buildings are connected, you said?
Would you, would you like to cross-examine the owners of the building?
Not at all.
Okay, good. You're, where you are and where Parks Authority is, is connected, you said?
They have, they, there was a, there's a ramp.
There's a ramp and it closed it, all right.
And they, they call, you know, like the, the other, the other two, the buildings inside, they have like different ramps when they goes down.
All right.
Like, you know, something like that.
Okay, at one time it was all used together?
Right.
By the old owners?
Right, right.
So I can't do that, I'm trying here.
I'm the one who's got to describe.
How many uses are there? There's three.
There's going to be three, they're looking to do three.
There is three. Mr. Chairman, if you would be so kind as to make a brief recess so that we can regroup.
Yes, that's a good idea.
Mr. Duzinberry getting up to you.
How long would it be?
Ten minutes would be adequate.
Okay, why don't we come back at twenty after? That way I give you an extra two minutes in the meeting.
Thank you very much.
We are back on the record.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, once again, Michael Piramali, from Gashon, Chicago. After some brief discussion with regard to the separate lots that comprise this property, we've uncovered the fact that although this portion of the property we believe is lot five, independently lot five, the way the building is arranged will likely require us to incorporate that third use into this application. So we're going to have to come back and do that because the parking calculation that we have provided does not include this square footage.
So you're asking for an adjournment?
We're going to need an adjournment, Mr. Chairman.
Before we do that, I would like Mr. DiLorenzo to confirm all this, so we don't have to do this again next month, you know, more confusion.
We would appreciate that.
Yeah, and I just, I would just really let me come back, you know, a real clear understanding of the principal uses in that building. That's what I'd like to see.
You have an objection?
No.
Well, usually when the other attorney gets up, it's usually for an objection.
No, no, it's just to, I'm sure that Mr. Piramali is going to renotice for the next meeting, because now we have an additional use, and the notice needs to be expanded. So I just want to make sure that happens. I don't want to come back here and object next month and have us go off for another question.
Yes, because as we all know, if the notice is bad, the whole application goes out the door.
Yeah, and, and there's a question in my mind whether or not you got to start over, but that's something for your council to decide. So you're going to renotice?
We are.
And were you going to ask Frank?
No, I was going to ask Frank, yes. Frank, can we get our testimony? What is actually here?
I will, yes, I will double check and let you know next week.
And the previous use?
Yes. If we have, if we have record of it.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, we just need an updated memo from you for the next month.
Yes. Two quick questions.
Of course.
Is there currently an exit onto Stevens Street?
From the other property, yes.
From the parking area.
Yes.
For Parks Authority, there is none. There's, there's an exit into the parking area lot, correct, but not directly out onto Stevens.
And, one other question. On our A5, our small A5, did you hand that out to me?
Correct.
Same page.
Correct, the revision that was made is to show the setback for the parking spaces. That's the only change that was made, to indicate to the board that we are providing the required five-foot setback for those parking spaces.
And this parking lot is proposed for the current parking lot plus the stolen area in the corner?
That is correct.
Okay, and there will be no second curb cut coming out of the parking lot? It'll only be on Rucker Street only?
That is correct.
Okay. I have a request. I believe you mentioned earlier that your planner had reports, had written reports?
Did, and we would be having...
I don't have one, I don't think the board members... Why don't we mark that in now, it'll give us a month to digest.
To digest.
I believe Mr. Duzinberry has a copy. We're the only ones that know. So what's the order? I'm going to mark that A7, planner's report.
And this is a report with regard to the existing retail uses in the office.
Okay, it needs to be updated, it's been updated, but I'm going to mark it A7, I think it will be updated.
I don't know if we're going to ask, but can we get copies of the other pages of the plans, so we only have A5? Can we also get all the other...
Yes, and the updated stuff, can we get copies of everything?
Yes, you can.
Because everything is so messed up here. So is everybody available for the fourth of next month?
Uh, fifth, Mr. Chairman.
April fifth. Fifth. We want to check with your witnesses to see if, okay? And I believe Mr. Gashon will be back, but...
And as you had requested, Mr. Chairman, this application will be solely mine.
Okay. If you just want to change it, it's okay, especially since you have to give notice all over here.
Fair enough.
Okay. April fifth, new notice in this room, seven o'clock. Yeah, seven o'clock, you'll, you'll probably, yes, you're gonna be the first on the agenda. How's that sound?
That sounds wonderful.
Uh, I love when things work out. Let's move on, last case on the agenda. Okay, so everybody in the audience, this case is being adjourned, uh, ZB 2017, that's zero eighteen thirty-three thirty-seven Rucker Street, being adjourned Thursday, April fifth. And there will be new notice in the newspaper and within two hundred feet by mail. Piramali, you're here on this one as well, right?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Argo.
Oh, we're getting a full note. Notice and publication appear to be acceptable. Yes, you might start your case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Notice is okay?
Once again...
Mr. Brakes, your notice is okay?
Yes.
Is that A1 for evidence? Yes, we used to do that. All right. A1's notice.
Michael Piramali, who from Gashon, Chicago, five twenty-four, Union Avenue in Belleville, on behalf of applicant Lin Zumie. Lin Zumie also owns the property at issue located at three twelve Washington Avenue, otherwise known as Lot eight eight oh one, Lot One on tax maps of the township of Belleville. Zapkins before the board this evening seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval in addition to use and bulk variance relief in order to use the subject property as a mixed-use building with two residential dwelling units on the second floor and a restaurant on the first floor. Currently, the first floor of the building is vacant, and the second floor is occupied by two residential dwelling units but will not be changed as a result of the present application. The subject property is located in the BB zone, and the proposed use of the property is not permitted in the zone. The variance is being requested in conjunction with this application, specifically the applicant is requesting a D1 use variance in order to permit two principal uses on the property, namely the proposed restaurant and the two existing residential units on the second floor. That's in violation of Belleville Zone Ordinance twenty-three dash seven point one J. Also, we're requesting a D3 variance for the proposed restaurant use, which is conditional in the zone, in the BB zone pursuant to Belleville Zone Ordinance twenty-three seven point eight, but does not meet one of the conditions for the use. And that condition that we do not meet is specifically, we do not meet the bulk requirements for the zone. C or bulk variance relief for minimum lot width, where forty feet is required in the BB zone pursuant to Belleville Schedule of Regulations, and a lot width of thirty-five feet is provided, that is pre-existing. Another C or bulk variance for minimum side yard setback, where a side yard setback of ten feet is required if one is provided in the BB zone. We have a side yard setback of two feet being proposed, that again is pre-existing. C or bulk variance for parking spaces located within five feet of any lot line, it's in violation of our Belleville Zone Ordinance twenty-three six dash seven, where parking spaces are proposed zero feet from the lot line. Finally, C or bulk variance for a minimum parking space size, where parking spaces are proposed, which are nine by eighteen feet, where nine by nineteen feet is required. And lastly, we're asking for a variance for a minimum number of parking spaces, where nine parking spaces are required, and we're providing four parking spaces. For this application, I intend to call two witnesses. First property owner Lin Zumie will testify regarding the current and proposed use of the property and the operation of the restaurant. Next, our architect and planner Frank Miletto will testify regarding the proposed improvements to the property, specifically the interior of the building, and to the variances being requested and why they should be granted. Mr. Chairman, if you're prepared, I'd like to call my first witness.
So Frank, is he still there?
Yeah.
So what used to be on the first floor got abandoned?
At this property? I believe, I think it was a cabinet maker.
Cabinet maker?
Yeah.
And then there was always two apartments upstairs, correct?
Correct.
And the reason we're here because two principal uses?
Yeah.
Were there two principal uses before?
That's my, that's my, that's my driving towards.
Yes, there was.
There was, so there already is two principal uses approved?
It was a cabinet, it was a restaurant.
Yeah, we're just going for the restaurant.
Restaurant, yeah.
So the restaurant is in violation. Well, where the cabinets weren't, or they were, but...
They were.
They're legally pre-existing. A little color.
Something like that.
Is it?
They may have pre-existed the zone.
Sure.
I don't know, I don't know.
There's also, there's also one...
Can I just get a question finished? Thank you. I don't know. It's two principal uses, so it's different between a restaurant and a cabinet maker?
Correct.
Right?
Yeah, 'cause retail was allowed there.
Okay, that's the question I have.
Right. It leads into retail, I think, was the BB zone.
Thank you, thank you. That's all, no further questions.
Sure. Now Frank, let me ask you a question. Under the term...
Consider, Frank, consider yourself under oath.
As usual.
Thanks, Lou.
Considering the change that is being made to the whole Washington Avenue area, the proposed change, would this be allowed or would it still have to come before us?
Now, if this was, uh, the proposed change, I think the planner...
That they're gonna make the whole thing?
Right, yeah. I think it would meet it, I'd have to do calculations on the lot area to make sure it would meet it, but, uh, yeah, and I'm assuming it would, but I'd have to double check there.
So it's up to, up to you whether you wanna proceed or not, because if they make changes and make this filed, or it may still be a problem, because there is a proposal to make all Washington Avenue the same zone.
We are aware, Mr. Chairman, we would like to proceed due to time constraints.
No problem, no problem.
We do appreciate the opportunity.
I believe there's an apartment on the second floor and apartment on the third floor, not two apartments on the second floor.
My apologies, I stated my understanding was incorrect. So there's a three-story building, there's one residential dwelling unit on the second floor, one residential dwelling unit on the third floor.
And illegal, I think?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Are they legal?
No, no, no.
Legal.
Oh, legal, I can hear, you're right, I can hear.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to briefly call the property owner Lin Zumie to testify.
Yes, you may.
Mr. Chairman, due to the fact that Ms. Zumie speaks predominantly Chinese, she brought an interpreter with her, her interpreter's name is Anna Lin Heish, I'm gonna spell them both for the court reporter right now.
You better, you better put this down.
To make life easier for everybody. Our property owner is Lin Zumie, it's three words, L-I-N-X-I-U-M-E-I.
X-I-U-M-E-I.
Correct, that's correct, that is three separate...
And in our interpreter... Lin Zumie is an owner?
Correct.
And which?
That is Lin Zumie.
And who's gonna be the interpreter?
This is our interpreter, she is Anna Lin Heish. Anna is A-I-N-A, Lin Heish is hyphenated, L-I-N hyphen H-S-I-E-H.
S? Who's the last, the last word after the hyphen? She's the interpreter?
That's correct.
No, it isn't, it's complicated. Okay, um, why don't I swear, I'm gonna swear them both in?
That would be great.
Could you both raise your right hand? Okay, with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so you're both under oath, um... And you understood that in English? Okay. You're no different than anyone else, don't, don't worry about it. Everybody, okay, so, all right, so the testimony's coming from the owner through the interpreter?
That is correct, and the owner will also be the operator of the proposed restaurant, which is the point of, of her testimony, I think it's crucial to this application. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll be right through there.
Yes, we're ready.
Ms. Zumie, are you the owner of the property at three twelve Washington Avenue, Belleville?
You're gonna have to speak up, man, so we can hear.
Louder.
Louder, because it's being recorded.
I was only translating.
I understand.
Okay, translate that.
We don't have to hear it.
She's gonna write, translating.
I'm not taking that down, I just wanna draw the line.
All right, just the English needs to be...
Correct.
Okay, yes.
Okay, so the answer's yes.
And how long have you owned the property?
One year.
Okay, and should the application be approved, how do you intend to use the first floor?
Restaurant.
Okay, and what type of restaurant?
Takeout.
Okay, will there be delivery, will there be dine-in?
Takeout or delivery.
Okay, and how about dine-in?
It's mainly for takeout.
But there will, there will be two tables?
Yeah.
We'll get more on that with our architect. Uh, and you and your husband live in the building?
Yes.
And how many employees will work at the restaurant?
She and her husband and a delivering person.
And what hours will the restaurant be open?
Monday to Thursday, eleven to, eleven AM to eleven PM. And Friday and Saturday, Saturday is the eleven to eleven thirty. And Sunday, we open to eleven thirty to ten thirty.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
No further questions. Does any member of the board have any questions of the applicant based upon this assessment?
Just what's your property?
Which apartment, uh, is third floor, second floor, third floor?
Second floor.
Second, right above the restaurant.
Third floor is rented out?
Okay, any other questions for members of the board? Any questions by members of the public of testimony here? None, you have a second witness?
I do, I'd like to call our architect and planner, Mr. Frank Miletto.
Thank you.
Good job.
Chairman? If you'd raise your right hand, please.
My name is Frank, middle initial D, Miletto, fourteen Beaverbrook Drive, Long Valley, New Jersey. I'm a registered architect, licensed planner, since the seventies, early seventies.
Miletto, let me just make sure I have your spelling correct for your last, M-I-L-E-T-O.
Correct, one of each.
Okay, and you've appeared previously in front of us as an archi...
Several times.
Are you, are you here as an architect and a planner?
Yes, sir.
Both? If the board's comfortable with that?
Yes.
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 Any names? Is the license and everything's good?
Licensed continuously since nineteen seventy-four.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Miletto, we need you to prepare the plans for proposed conversion of the first floor of this building and also to prepare the site plan.
Yes.
What's the zoning at the site?
It's currently zoned Business B, general business, BB.
Would you describe the site and the building itself and the areas surrounding the site?
Yes, it's, it's an existing thirty-five foot by one hundred foot lot on Washington Avenue in the main district area, shopping center area. It has a three-story building on the, in the front of the property, and to the rear there is an existing paved parking lot for four vehicles. It has a driveway to the north of the building, which is a shared driveway, uh, shared with the owners next door, although our current owner owns the driveway, they share it in order for the park, the parcel to the north access to their parking, which is behind their building on the north side of this area.
What do you say, share, is that shared by deed?
Sorry.
Is that shared by deed or by...
I don't know, I really don't know, but they've been using it for many years, but I don't know if it's a deed in or that it's not. But it doesn't affect us.
We have enough area ours.
Is all ours, the whole parking, the drive is ours. We allow the neighbor next door to...
What neighbor next door?
There's a building next door to the north of this.
To the south, not that, or you said the north?
Oh, I got myself upside down, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Because that's the other case we had.
I'm sorry, I, I had my map upside down, I'm sorry. So, that being said, um, we provide, we propose to provide four off-street parking spaces. Now, I'd like to just start, if I might, for my planning testimony, because I think that's critical to this application. As mentioned by the chairman, there is a proposed ordinance change on the master plan, which specifically targets this lot or this area, zone, on Washington Avenue and this particular BB zone between Parkway and Academy Street. Not Parkway, that's the street.
Supposed to make it all, all the same, I believe, from Mill Street all the way to Nutley Hall?
Right.
Correct.
Basically. And the interesting thing is, is that many of these variances that we are currently requesting go away generally because the zone will allow for the following, rezoning, if it goes through, we'll go, we'll allow for mixed-use building, which is what we have here, it's a mixed-use building, and that's a good thing in my opinion as a planner, because you need residential in a commercial zone to keep it viable. Otherwise, you end up with a lot of empty stores, and that's not a good thing. The store is in condition, marginal condition now, and what our client is proposing to do is what I call privately funded urban renewal. They're gonna fix the front up, they're gonna redo the brick, they're putting the warnings on, they're gonna clean up the parking lot, they're gonna do all those great things that are in the master plan and, and are encouraged. It also encourages shared parking, which we are there, we do that, exactly that now. So what it's doing is saying to the everyone that what we have here now is the direction we should be going in, and that's what we're asking it to do. Even the parking lot sizes are going to be in accordance with the residential site improvement standards, which will be nine by eighteen versus what the current ordinance in Belleville is larger, so that will conform. So generally, I can think of no negative impact, matter of fact, there's all positive impacts. The conditional use will no longer be required because the lot sizes are changing and this application could be approved without detriment to any of the surrounding areas. Matter of fact, it will bring the property and the area into conformity with the current, with the new Belleville master plan. I understand it's been through the planning board stage of the operation, it'll be presented to the mayor council shortly, and hopefully it will be approved, and that will make us right in line with where we have to be. I think that's as short and sweet as I could make it.
And there are no new variances?
I'm sorry?
All the variances are pre-existing, and they're not gonna...
Correct.
All the bulk variances are pre-existing, depending on how we view the two principal use variance, obviously we received that in letter of denial requesting that variance and we sequestered it. The D3 use variance...
We didn't, that's the reason.
The D3 use variance is for us not complying with the bulk standards of the zone, that's why we don't meet the conditional use requirements, that's one of the conditions. Now, the parking space requirement, I believe that might be new, I think the restaurant parking demand might be greater than the prior retail parking demand.
There is no parking standard for a restaurant?
And, and generally, this use is one of those walk-in type of operations, stop, quick, in, out, there's only two, two tables, total of, maximum total of eight people, and they don't go there to dine, they go there to eat and... And generally, this use is one of those walk-in type of operations, stop, quick, in, out, there's only two tables, total of, maximum total of eight people, and they don't go there to dine, they go there to eat and leave. It's a fast operation, that's generally it, not like across the street at the Sussumer, where you sit down and relax with a glass of wine. So, that being said, it's my opinion that this application can be granted without substantial detriment, any detriment, no detriment to the zone plan. It's in accordance with the proposed master plan, and I believe that it can be granted without...
Would you, would you address the engineering planners' report?
Yes.
Specifically on site plan one to seven, I know you covered a couple of these, but there's some other.
We're gonna agree to all of it, because we have no choice, but all improvements to the property. First is that the hours operation were already answered by the applicant. There will be applicant's help, as described, the proposed facade improvements. If you look at my plan, there's a note that the brickwork will be replaced to match the existing. It'll all be cleaned down, painted, repainted, because the brickwork's already been painted previously. There'll be a new proposed awning over the front, which will incorporate facade with the awning. Forced parking stalls in the rear of the building, light detail, there's an existing pole light that lights the entire parking area as it is now. That's a utility pole provided by the...
She said a yes.
Existing, and it lights the rear yard.
That's a yes.
That's a yes. They're gonna comply with it.
We're not wanting to say yes or no, that's kind of what we're looking for.
Uh, the question is, if you would just go through them and indicate that we will comply with any...
You know who's gonna comply with them?
Yeah, so if you reach one, we'll comply with one.
Because I got as far as the lighting is concerned, and four parking spots.
Get him on the weapon, and he's gonna comply.
Comply with all of them, gonna comply with all of them. Yes, is the answer, absolutely, you wanna cut it short?
Yes, is the answer.
Absolutely. These are all reasonable requests for improvement of the property.
I think Mr. Di Lorenzo had some as well, which were very similar, so we're gonna include those as a yes tomorrow.
In hand, in hand.
Mr. Di Lorenzo also had similar...
Yes.
Conditions, and you're gonna agree to those?
Yes, and of course, we're gonna...
I have no further questions.
Mr. Mafucci has a question.
Yes. You use the term shared parking, do you mean that's by your customers?
No, no, the parking area in the back...
Yes, I know.
Is double-loaded, so to speak, the driveway goes in the middle, to the left is our property parking, and to the right is the parking of the neighbor next door.
On the south.
On the south. They have to share the backup area, they have to share the driveway, it's a win-win for both of them.
But the parking would be for the tenants, since no parking...
Yeah, generally, the tenants are gonna park in those spots, absolutely, the residential tenants.
That's not the general use of the term, shared parking.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
There would be no shared parking, no sharing of the parking...
The proposed new zoning for the area, this would be allowed?
Yes, it would. That's why I brought it up.
Thing is, you never know.
Yeah, they may change something, the last...
We're here, we notice...
Or the council may not go along with the recommendation.
Exactly, so...
No, I agree.
Take no chances.
But I gave testimony to that, and my testimony was it should all be one. Because right now, it looks like a tic-tac-toe.
I would love to sum up.
Oh, okay, Mr. Mafucci has another question.
Yes.
Right now, there are three numbered spaces going north-south, and a semi-line space going east-west. So, not four, like it's shown in your diagram.
Oh, you mean currently on the site? Yeah, there's many more parking spots there, they're, it's a hodgepodge, they just, they've got much more. If you look at the photograph in the lower-left corner, they have parking, generally the way it shows here on this aerial photograph, but...
That's not the way it's modeled.
Well, it's, it's not organized, and that's one of the things we're going to do. Prepare the back parking lot, we're gonna re-stripe it with the nine-by-eighteen spaces.
And in what's called space number one, the utility poles?
Yes, no, those aren't, there's an existing light pole, but the one along the back, those are not utility poles, those are existing chain link fence. Is that the ones you're talking about?
No, there was a worker there today, I don't know, it was Verizon or somebody, worked up on the poles. So, the pole back here, here number one is, will that still be a full-size parking spot?
I see, yeah, it goes in different directions, but that's where our, that's where our parking lot light is. But they use that same pole for other wires that we have no control.
But that would still be a full-size parking spot, even with the pole?
Yes.
I assume the things as far as vectoring the...
That's handled at our level, yeah, you guys have no control over that.
Exactly.
We handle it at our level.
Yeah.
That's right.
Uh, any members of the public wish to ask any questions based upon testimony? Any members of the public wish to give testimony on, on this case? It's gotta be a record.
Yes, he can sum up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Chairman, members of the board, for your attention, I'd like to say a few brief words in summation. As you heard, the application presented before the board seeks preliminary final major site plan approval to use the subject property as a mixed-use building with two residential dwelling units, one on the second, one on the third floor, and a Chinese food restaurant on the first floor for dine-in, carry-out, and delivery. Although variance relief is required for the two principal uses proposed at the site, this is the case when the first floor was occupied by the prior cabinet store as well, before it became vacant, and is a common situation owing to Washington Avenue corridor. Lastly, despite the fact that additional bulk variance relief is required in connection with this application as a result of the current conditions on the property, they will not be changed as a result of this current application. Based on public testimony exhibited before the board, I strongly suggest that sufficient proofs have been presented to justify the granting of the variances at issue, and I ask this board to grant the application, thank you.
Alright, gentlemen, your pleasure.
I make a motion to approve with all the conditions set forth.
And put in the report, Mr. Harvitz and Mr. Di Lorenzo's report. Anybody else? Any other conditions, anything? No? Okay. Motion was made by Mr. Dridanon.
She's not voting, she's not voting.
Second altered.
No. Alright, seconded by Mr. Mafucci. Clerk, call the roll.
Carusa. Dridanon.
Yes.
Pata.
Yes.
Mafucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Palata.
Yes.
Del Gersia.
Yes.
Thank you, and good night. Short meeting.
Just get out of here before the rain.
Gentlemen, and ladies, I will hand something out, which I found in our office. And the front page part, okay, that is a very, very important thing to read. Because it applies specifically to the zoning.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, have a good time, I hope, I hope you do very well.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, you notice that? It says guidelines for quasi-judicial bodies, which means specifically the planning and the zoning board. So, I think we should look that over, because it tells you about conflicts, et cetera, because we're a quasi-judicial body. Okay, you have the two resolutions?
Can I ask your question, please?
Sure. Yes, special meeting will be for April, she will show up at the April meeting, and we will decide what date will be okay for all of us. So, find out from the clerk what days are available in April for special meetings. I think she gave you three days now.
That was March.
That was March. So, does she approve seven to nothing?
Oh, not one, two?
Uh, I have resolution. Okay?
Okay.
Matter of I.S. Realty Group LLC, 603 Main Street, resolution to memorialize Carusa... Mafucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Palata.
Yes.
Del Gersia.
Yes.
Matter of ENN Realty, 632, 634 Hill Street. Carusa.
Yes.
Mafucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Palata.
Yes.
Del Gersia.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Rango has something to say?
Uh, well, my point is this, if you don't do a resolution to memorialize, I don't want to hear the case, period. He's not allowed to do what he's supposed to do.
We've had, we've had this issue with premier developers, except for the 102 Washington Avenue. We discussed it briefly last week. This was denied, the planning board denied a request for redevelopment recommendation back in October. And they did not done a resolution, but I've spoken to Mr. Di Biase, and what they've done is, as a planning board, they put in the minutes and they sent a letter to the council, basically saying, we did not go along with the redevelopment plan, have this presented, and it was denied, and we are returning jurisdiction of the matter to the zoning board. I've not, I've not seen the letter.
I haven't read it.
Okay.
Well, now, there's another part of this.
Now.
If the event was approved, would there be a resolution to be memorialized?
Yeah, but...
If that's true, then it has to be for a denial also, can't have it one way.
I, I don't disagree.
But thank you.
Here's the real issue, I spoke also with Jerry Di Papalo, who's primo's deputy assistant. He was the attorney. I told him, and he agreed, that a lot of, a lot of what happened at the planning board was moot, because there was a record, there was a statement made by, not you, Tom, but the other planner, that because the, Miss Sally?
Don, Don Mydell.
Yeah, Mydell, because what we granted in 2015, the time had expired, that he couldn't build anymore, and the approval expired. It's not the law, the law is that what expires is the protection from a zone change. The zone change, there have been no zone changes. And I told Di Papalo that as I saw it, if he wanted to build, now, it's nice to have an extension, if there's something down the road happens, you're not gonna get your... I said, in my view, you can go ahead and put a shovel in the ground, assuming you get the proper permits, and that I don't know how they could have gotten a recommendation on that redevelopment, because what was in existence, in my view, was our approval for eighty apartments, eighty apartments.
Yes, it was, eighty apartments and a restaurant on the first floor.
Why are you gonna give, other than a tax break, why are you gonna give land that has approval for eighty units and, and retail, put it in a redevelopment zone, because you gotta show that the land's blighted, and we approved a good project? So, Di Papalo agreed with that, he said, my guy wants to build, but he doesn't want to have happen is, he starts building, and somehow he gets slammed by, by the town.
Frank's the one who does the slamming, not just Frank.
What Di, what, Di Biase told me today was that, no big deal, that you'd give them a permit to build tomorrow, and nobody, nobody, he said, planning board's not gonna do anything, the town's not gonna do anything, they still, in my view, have an approval from this board to build eighty units and, and retail.
And I can tell you something, the proposed change to Washington Avenue, Frank, Frankie could back me up, is not gonna change anything, that zone is not being changed.
No, that zone's not changed.
So, in my view...
What was the dummy units for, though?
Pardon? Site plan.
Site plan?
We did the site plan.
We did an amended site plan in 2015.
Lowered, from ninety-six to eighty?
Yes, it was lowered to eighty, with a restaurant...
Took a floor off.
A restaurant, a hundred...
Took a floor off.
Hundred fifty onsite parking spaces, eight, uh, prior approval permitted a height of seven stories facing Washington, and eight stories facing the rear yard line, they went down to five stories on Washington, and six stories on the rear, so, and they reduced the onsite spaces to a hundred fifty-five, still eighty units, forty-eight being one-bedroom, thirty-two being two-bedroom. As far as I'm concerned, that's still viable, and they can build it. So, I don't know what the planning board's thought.
Frankie agreed, correct? Yeah, I told him that.
Planning board's off to, I don't care what they do, we don't need a resolution from them. This guy can come in.
But I'm not taking any more action from this guy.
No, we don't need to do anything.
Unless they're coming before us, that they wanna take another floor off, I don't want anything.
Well, what they would wanna do...
I've heard they may be looking to do that.
If I were them, I would, I would get whatever I could get in the way of permits to, as soon as possible, and put shovel in there. Then they're okay. But if they felt that there was something in the wind, that a zone changed, then I could see coming in and asking for an extension. But we have nothing to do with the planning board. What they did, to my way of thinking, what they did, they wouldn't have gone that far if they knew that...
Listen to what I want you to tell Mr. Di Papalo, okay? This is what I want you to tell, or I'll tell him on the phone, personally. He's the one who caused all this, because we were ready to give him the thing, but he wanted to go to the planning board, now he's stuck with it.
He asked for it in a German when they came in before, on extension.
So, now he's stuck with what he's got.
So, in my view, there's nothing we have to do...
Right.
Um, they can go ahead and pull, get whatever permits they need, and Frank, because Di Biase said you were okay with that, and I wanted to ask you about that.
I didn't talk, speak to mine, but...
He told me that you'd permit like that.
I love how he talks for you.
Yeah.
No, but he, everybody agreed with my position, including Di Papalo, so, we don't really need to worry about anything else. They have the approval, so they should go ahead and move on. The only difference would be the tax, the tax break, and you...
No, but that would have to be if they made it in area needed, otherwise they can't get a tax break.
Yeah.
So, that's up to them, let them play whatever they wanna play games.
No, no, that went down to...
As far as we're concerned, we are done unless they come up with a changed application, a modified application.
That's it, I don't wanna see it.
Agreed?
I don't wanna see it.
Right. And I, and I won't even see the modified until, until that thing is settled, so, that's it, they played games for as long enough, twelve years.
Even when the council approves the zone change, they could add a couple more floors to that building without having to...
Well, I don't know if they could, no, they're not coming back before us because of the height requirements.
Yeah, yeah, they would have to come back.
They would, no, 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 no.
And allow it to take stories.
No, no, they would, they would, they would only condense that lot small.
Well, it's what, density is fifty units per acre.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, guess what? That's not an acre.
It used to be way higher.
Not even an acre, so it's all, they were bigger and they were...
It used to be twenty-five.
For them to think anything different, they'd have to come back here, but they should move ahead as soon as possible, that's my advice to them.
Not there. Zero, because it's not allowed, it's a business zone.
I told Mr. Di Papalo we did not need to show up tonight.
No.